We're live. All right, good evening, everybody. I'm sure we're gonna have people trickling in. But we don't want to keep you any longer than we need to, especially since it's a weeknight, worknight, schoolnight, whatever for everybody. I will preface this by saying, if you look, probably somewhere on your screen, I don't know exactly where it's gonna show up for you, but you will see a Q and A function. You'll probably also see a chat function. If you have questions, we strongly prefer to use the Q and A function. It's just easier to manage. Okay, if you want to chat with each other, you can use the chat function. But if you want to ask us questions, that's someone we're gonna be paying attention to. So use that, please. Already up to almost fifty people. So, great. We'll, we'll get this ball rolling here. Hopefully, everything will work right. First screen is introductions. If I can get this, there we go. This is going to work. This is me, John Foreman, Strategic Manager for Talent, and also the Indoor Performance Director. So that basically means it's my job to deal with all this stuff. You can also see Kerry on the screen. She and Molly, who's not with us, or the other two that work, quote unquote, in the office, or virtually in the office with me on the Talent Team, and they do the bulk of the administrative work. Kerry works a lot with the teams themselves. Molly does a lot of the event organization. You see Bertrand on the screen as well. He kind of splits time between us and Talent, and also kind of the education side of things, especially around coach education. He runs our Futures Program. He's also the lead person for DICE. If you know what DICE is, if you have any questions about that, maybe we can get to that at the end. I don't want to drill down too far into it, because it's kind of a narrow slice. There's also TASK, which ties in with some of the stuff that we do on the beach side of things. And you'll also see on the screen Kirk Pittman, our Beach Performance Director. So Kirk's gonna have a little piece of this presentation in a little bit, so you'll get to hear from him as well. And I just wanted, I put down the bottom of the screen, all the others that are basically involved in Talent in one way or another, largely in a volunteer capacity. So all of our national team coaches, our national team managers, the physios that help out, the S and C people that help out, sports psychologists, all the support staff. This isn't even talking about the people at VE, they contribute in one way or another, because Talent crosses over a lot of spaces, communication, education, competitions, Laura's group, Laura Hama and Get Keep Grow, which is kind of the club management and the region-county management side of things. So we kind of touch all of that and interact with all of that along the way. So I just wanted to include this to give you a sense of who we are, because a lot of you probably haven't, you may have interacted with us, but you never actually put a name to a face. So hopefully that kind of gives you a sense of what's going on. And Kerry's already got a question.
Yeah, so, sorry, John. On my screen, I can still just see the intro slide. I didn't know if you'd moved on from that slide.
I have.
It's not, so I'm still on the, like, the first one.
Yeah, I've noticed before that there tends to be a lag, but I'm not sure why that's the case.
I can see, I can see it changing. I'm on Talent Team now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, can you see on your screen now, Kirk?
Our ultimate goal?
Yes.
Next.
All right, okay. So Kerry, maybe you just have a bit of lag on your end.
Yeah, maybe.
Okay, hopefully everybody else is able to stay along with us. So, yeah, moving on to the kind of the big picture of what we're all about here, and this is express goal of Volleyball England is qualification for the Olympics. And now, we're realistic about where we are with our programs these days, but this is ultimately what we're moving toward. On the beach side, you know, Kirk can kind of fill you in a little bit, we're further along on that path than we are on the indoor side. Sitting, I'm not really gonna talk about very much this evening. Problem, I doubt most of you are really involved with sitting at this point, because we don't really have a juniors piece of that. But sitting also works a little bit differently in that it is a GB thing, not an England thing, at least at present. But that's, that's something for a separate discussion. But just to reinforce, our ultimate objective, and that's where kind of this slide comes in, is top of the pyramid, where we want to go is getting to the Olympics, playing the Olympics as a team that actually qualifies, as opposed to, you know, hosting in 2012 and getting the automatic spot. Not that we're against that too, but I don't know the next time we're gonna be hosting the Olympics, so we kind of have to plan things out as if we're not. This pyramid is actually something that Kirk originally developed and I kind of repurposed. It's, it's fairly general in terms of scope, and then we just kind of tried to show you how things kind of fit together. So at the bottom, we've got, you know, what we'll call Futures, which is the younger kids. We have the Futures Program indoor. Maybe that's something we'll extend over into the beach. We'll see. We haven't really talked about it at this point, but there are some other things going on the beach in terms of the development centers that definitely has some overlap into this area. Futures for us kind of is the lead-in at the bottom of the pyramid for the youngest kids coming in. And then you progress into what has, in recent years, been called the cadets, which is kind of under eighteen, under seventeen, depending on which year and competition you're talking about. And then the juniors, it's just kind of that under nineteen, under twenty, which is kind of what we've described as next generation moving up into under twenty-two, which is a new thing that we're, we're putting together starting this year. That's kind of a bridge between the juniors and then the senior teams at the top of the pyramid. And you'll see in here some of the support systems, whether it be Sport England, Sport Aid, I mentioned DICE before, I mentioned TASK before, British Volleyball BVF, that's, it kind of aggregates funding from UK Sport, which you'll see on this graphic as well. Anything to do with GB stuff goes through BVF. Sport England is, is stuff that primarily comes to Volleyball England, obviously. Not, wouldn't make a lot of sense if it went to Scotland. Competitively, you'll see the kind of on the bottom right-hand side, NEVZA, that's our zone, the Northern European Zonal Association. That's, the Scandinavian countries are the bulk of that. So Denmark, Norway, Sweden, Finland's in there, Faroe Islands, Greenland, Iceland. Am I forgetting anybody, Kerry? I think that's all of them. Or close to it, anyway. Sitting, NEVZA sits within CEV, so it's a zone within CEV, which is the European Confederation. They run the European Championships. And then CEV fits under FIBB, which is the global federation, who run World Championships and also determine Olympic qualification. So we won't get, we're not doing a lot with the FIBB here outside of our, our senior men's, well, not just the men's, but our senior beach players are playing in world tour events. Indoor, we're not really touching on that to this point, and our, our age group players are not, haven't reached that level yet on the beach either. But aspirationally, and you know, obviously if we want to get to the Olympics, we have to go through FIBB to get there. So when we talk about what we're trying to do in the talent pathway, and what I'm gonna talk about over this next little bit here is a lot of stuff that I talked with the board about back in November, I believe it was, in terms of the five-year plan. Now, it's not our five-year plan to get through the Olympics, because that would be more aggressive than I think any of us is prepared for, except maybe the bellows on the beach. Possibilities there. But overall, we know it's gonna take a little bit more time and effort and foundation building. So I put this graphic together to kind of show you the pillars that we see supporting the stuff that we're trying to do, and those are coaching, player support, and competitions. And this leads on to what, something I developed over the summer when I was working on getting to understand the environment that we're in, because I started with Volleyball England at the end of May, and eventually got to England in September. But I used the summer effectively to get in touch with a lot of people, kind of start to shape a sense of where we wanted to go and how we wanted to do it. And this reach framework kind of encapsulates what we see we want to do based on those three pillar concepts. So recognize and recruit athletes with the right profile, physical, mental, athletic, all of that. Engage those athletes with high-quality coaching. Amplify the competitive playing environments that they are able to take part in. Cultivate their career aspirations, whether that's playing at uni, playing professionally, playing in the national teams, obviously is something we, we hope that, you know, players want to do. And then help those athletes achieve those goals and take their game to, and their careers, and even their lives to hopefully nice, high places and successful, rewarding experiences. But just kind of from the perspective of what that means, kind of in an action sort of sense, especially in this next five-year phase of it, is we need to create a national scouting network and generally grow the player pool. Fortunately, juniors volleyball has been growing quite rapidly, which is what we love to see. You know, that's, that's helping us increase the player pool. But we also need to be able to identify and recognize athletes earlier than is a lot of times the case for us as a national governing body. Because club coaches, regional coaches, you know, people out in the countryside of volleyball are gonna see these up-and-coming athletes before we ever get a chance to a Volleyball England. So we need to have that network of people out there who can flag players up and say, you need to pay attention to this girl, this boy, and maybe bring them in. From there, we need to help them get the best coaching possible. So a lot of what we're gonna be working on is coach development and just creating that environment around the athletes to, to, to train them to the best, give them good experiences, and bring them along. Amplify with those, with the competitions is at the national team level. So we want to do more competitions than we've been able to do over the last few years, both indoor and beach. Fortunately, it looks like we're moving in positive directions in both of those. But we also want to keep working with the competitions team to evolve the competitive structures at the juniors level to keep pushing that competitiveness and the best play the best, and just generally create better developmental opportunities and playing opportunities all the way through the structure. I mentioned the aspirations, and then on the help side is really kind of thinking holistically about supporting the athlete all the way around. So not just when we have them in the gym with us, but when they're out of the gym, when they're back with their clubs, when they're back with their schools, wherever, wherever else they're involved in the sport. And just going through life, generally as young people. So I'll briefly touch on the coaching and competition piece, because this is probably less interesting to you guys right now. And in a second, we'll delve into the player piece. But just to give you a sense of the things that we're working on in the coach space, we're, we've already had coach award programs, level one, level two, et cetera, for a long time. And we continue to work on making those as good as they can be, as effective and useful as they can be. We're working on some stuff and could be kind of considered the level three, although that's kind of not how things are structured anymore by a kind of bigger standards. But the same idea of professional development, continue learning, that sort of thing is a big piece of that. Giving our coaches opportunities to continue growing past these, these formal awards, whether it be experience, whether it be learning from others, you know, in this country and other countries, wherever they may exist. And we've created a coaches group for the juniors coaches across the country to be part of, to, to share some of these things, to be able to communicate with them, to, to hear the challenges that they've got that we can maybe potentially try to address as the NGB. And generally, you know, rising tide lifts all boats sort of situation. And, and also from, to be selfish in our own regard, we need to identify national team coaches for the future. We have to develop those people. So this is part of that equation. Because, you know, not everybody's gonna be a national team coach for fifty years. We have some that might last that long, but we can't, we can't guarantee that. So we have to develop them, just like your local clubs need to develop coaches to, to keep, to keep their systems running. And on the competition side, there's a lot of conversations going on internally at VE about what juniors comps can look like moving forward, about restructuring the MVL, what that can mean for juniors players. I know there's a club that approached us the other day just asking about whether we have a policy regarding juniors players playing on adult teams in the MVL, because they're looking to develop something internally. Internationally, we, we were close to being able to announce a big international beach tournament we're gonna host, which is gonna be great, because it's gonna give our beach athletes some really good preparation for this year and give more players opportunities to play in international event than they have been able to in recent years. And from an indoor perspective, we, you might have picked up that we're, we're now competing in CEV competition in Euro qualification. That started with the NEVZA tournament in the fall, where the under seventeen girls finished third, which was high enough to move on to the next round of Euros, which they're gonna be playing in April twelfth to fourteenth in Spain. That's the second qualification round to try to get on to the, the main draw in the summer. It's gonna be a challenge. They have to play Spain, Estonia, and Germany? Right? Okay, good. I should, I should know this by heart by now. So, yeah, it won't be easy, but it'll be great experience for them. This is, this is the first time NEVZA's been a qualifier. So it's kind of a learning process with that organization and with everybody involved to see how that's gonna move forward. But we do know that NEVZA's planning to continue to do the under seventeen and under nineteen tournaments for the next two years in Denmark and Faroe Islands respectively. So that's giving us a chance to, to kind of think a few years ahead about what we want to do with our, our competition, our training structures. And I'll get into a bit more of that toward the end of the presentation when we kind of drill down on some details. But for now, I'm sure we want to move into the player support side of things, which covers a lot of different things that are going on. At the top of the list is sports and exercise medicine. You may have seen that we, we announced, I think it was in October, Dane Visnabala, Dr. Dane Visnabala, as our new chief medical officer, and he stepped right in and is on the next slide, you'll see, he's got a lot of stuff that he's working on in terms of governance and physio support and all that sort of stuff to just to get us to where we need to be as an organization to provide this, the right kind of medical environment for all the athletes across all of our competitions. So it's not just a talent thing, it's not just juniors or seniors in the national team. It covers our competitions as well, MVL, major events. Anything that Volleyball England is hosting, we're working to get a much better medical situation on. We're working on creating an athletes council. Actually, was on a call with that last evening, and it's pretty exciting where the two athletes that are kind of leading that at the moment have, have some designs to take that. But the idea is basically to get the athletes, the players in the MVL and beyond, much more involved in feeding into the decisions and the actions and everything that we're doing at Volleyball England. Obviously, Talent is part of that. It's not the only piece of it, but it is part of it. So we're looking forward to being able to get that sort of feedback. Kerry has a long list of, of guides and documents that she's working on. Some of them will be on a slide at the moment. But, but part of what we want to develop is an onboarding program for when people come into our pathway, both the athletes themselves and also the families, and even their, their club coaches on the backend to, to, to know what's going on and how it works. And we'll get into some of that in this conversation. But we want to get it all into one nice place where everybody can kind of have a reference point and see what it's all about. Our, I've already got a commitment from our, our communications guys that we can kind of develop some media training for our athletes, since we know the possibilities of social media and the building platforms and, and the opportunities that that can create for them. Those of you who've paid attention to what, what goes on in NCAA sports in the States will know the whole name, image, and likeness thing is, is a really big conversation point right now. And athletes are, are in some cases paying for uni just based on deals that they've got in that space, even, even amongst volleyball players. There may not be football players or basketball players, but there's volleyball players that are doing okay. And then something we've already started working on specifically, and some of you may be, may have seen this already, is working with athletes and families on kind of taking that step toward university and/or professionally from there. We've, we've got some athletes in the States, especially on the beach side, that are playing at uni there. We've obviously got athletes playing at unis across the UK. We have a number of athletes that are playing professionally in Europe and others that have played in other places as well. So we want to make sure that we can help as much as possible. And that's, because that's all ties in, obviously, with the, the aspirations and the, and the goals and whatnot that I mentioned before. So as I said, this was these are the priorities that Dane has, that he came in with. And a lot of these are either almost done very far along in the, in the process, or, or in the case of some things are a little bit further down the line. But most of our camps and events already have coverage on some level or of another with, with a physio or sport therapist or, or something along those lines. We're, Kerry and I are researching medical note systems to put in place so we can, we can have much better tracking of what's going on with the health of athletes. So far, we've been lucky that we haven't had any injuries at any of the events that physios have been at, certainly with the national team stuff anyway. Aside from, I think there was a young lady who, I don't know, kicked a door or something like that and hurt her toe off the court entirely, just kind of goofing around. But no on-court injuries, not even sprained ankles or anything. But the physios have talked with a number of athletes about existing conditions that they had. Done the last cadet camp in their preparation for the second round of Euros. One of the girls had to get pulled out of training midway through the first session because she had picked up a back problem on, I think, the Wednesday before, and talked with the physio and, you know, they agreed, okay, she's not in a, in a fit state to, to carry on. Literally, Dane's first day on the job with us, kind of in person, was, it was supposed to be that he was just doing physicals, but ended up having to, you know, help a family out with a boy who, who ended up having a fracture in his, in one of his vertebrae that had probably been there for a few months, that nobody had picked up on, because it just one of those things that kind of slips through. The club doesn't have medical coverage, you know, with a physio or whatever. We didn't up to that point. I don't know what else might have been in place, but Dane was able to get him in, I think for the very next, like on Monday, to get an MRI, get diagnosed, and then get him on a track to, to getting better. So we've already seen immediate benefits from having this medical cover. And as we're able to get it more solidified, we, we only see that getting better. And a lot of this other stuff, it just kind of builds on that with the education pieces, research that, the ideas that are coming up through all this. Eventually, we'll start doing some screening that'll be important in this whole process as well. But more information about this stuff will, will come out through the, through the process. In terms of the stuff that kind of like we're literally working on right now and hope to have done, you know, in the next little bit, updating the player's handbook, creating a handbook for parents, updating the selection and deslection policies. That, and that kind of covers the whole spectrum from whether it's getting selected to attend a camp, all the way up through whether you get selected to represent England. Now, we, a big part of what we're doing right now is better, more comprehensive communication. We know that that's been an issue on a lot of different levels for a number of years, and we want to make that better, and we want feedback from everybody and that sort of thing. So how we can do that. And then another thing Kerry and I are researching, kind of along with the medical note system, is a player tracking system so that we can keep track of not just the players that are in the teams now or at any given point in time, but the whole pathway of people that we wanted to keep an eye on and see how they're developing and, and tracking through the pathway from possibly the first time they show up for a Futures event or a low-level BVDC session or something like that, all the way up theoretically through, you know, senior national team participation or playing on the, on the FIBB Pro Tour. It's information that we just haven't had up to now, and it's, and if we really want to do the job that we want to do, that system ties in with so much other stuff that we, we want to have out there in terms of education and support and whatnot. So that's gonna be a big piece, and hopefully we'll be able to get that in place in the next few months. As I mentioned before, if you have any questions, feel free to shoot them into the Q and A. I know Kerry's keeping her eye on it and will flag me if there's anything that, that jumps out. But I wanna, and I'll, I'll let Kirk jump in on this if he wants to. I just want to give us a, like a quick sense of, of where we are, both beach and indoor. Beach is the easy one, because the structure is, is pretty much the same every year. Indoor, not quite so simple. But right now, we have teams that compete in the under eighteen, under twenty, and under twenty-two European Championships every year. And actually, in some cases, have done pretty well for themselves. Our senior teams are playing, you know, some play on the Pro Tour, they play in the Euros, they play in other international events throughout the year. We've just rolled out these new beach volleyball development centers at different, eight different locations around the country that are kind of, kind of be a focal point of what we do in the beach space. We're, we're pretty excited about that. They're gonna develop their own internal competitions as well as being part of the other things like the UK BT and other domestic events. NEVZA has started to become more of a thing for us, more of an opportunity for us. And then this year, we've got four national camps that we're planning in April, May, June, and July for the age group athletes. That'll be kind of a mixture of selection and development for these athletes. Anything I missed there, Kirk?
No, mate, that's, you've, you've got it all. I think, I probably just think I would add on is, you know, like the process. I think the exciting piece is the beach volleyball development centers and, and the opportunity for me to, you know, obviously the coaching piece is a big part of that coach development piece allows me to work with and mentor the coaches within the development centers. And I think just the, the structure around that and the, I guess, the, the, the environment for, for kids to go in there and have their coaching is exciting.
And an important part of this, and I didn't put it in a previous slide, is we've had a lot of conversations about trying to avoid conflict between the beach and indoor, you know, programs. So we're, we're very committed to allowing the athletes who are truly dual-disciplined to have the opportunity to focus on beach during the summer, when they need to focus on beach and not have the pressure of feeling like they also have to do indoor when it might not be best for them developmentally in a lot of different ways. So that's, that's, there's gonna be a lot better cooperation there than I think has been the case in, in previous years. Just to move on to the indoor stuff, and as I said, this is where things get a bit more complicated. Right now, our, as I mentioned earlier, our two primary international focuses are NEVZA for our zone and then CEV from NEVZA. So CEV run currently under sixteen and under twenty Euros in odd number of years, and under eighteen and under twenty-two Euros in even number of years, which is a strange structure, but we'll leave that aside. NEVZA for a number of years and for at least the next two, run under seventeen and under nineteen tournaments in October or October, November. As I mentioned earlier, those tournaments are now qualifiers for the under eighteen and under twenty Euros respectively, for, basically for the following year. So as I said, NEVZA is run in the autumn. And the, the Euro themselves are the summer, the summer after. So for example, like with, with the under seventeen girls who played at NEVZA in October last year, they're in a qualification process for this summer's under eighteen Euros. And it would have been, would have been the same with the under nineteen girls and boys if they, if they qualified from NEVZA for the under twenty to progression. Right now, NEVZA doesn't do an under fifteen or under sixteen tournament. So if we were to go that route and So if we were to go that route and we, we're, we're, we'll think about it at some point if it makes sense for us. But right now we, we're not really pursuing that. Um, but un- until and unless Nevza does host a qualifier, we'll have to go probably to, what they call Webza, which is Western Europe. Which is the likes of uh Spain, Germany, France, Italy, a lot of good teams. Uh, the, the girls that are now that under eighteen group last year did an under seventeen qualifier through Webza. They've changed the age groups, don't get caught up in that. Um, and they had to face, you know, the Italiens and the likes, and it was definitely, it was definitely a challenge. I think it was. One of the first things Charlie got to see in his, in his new role as CEO of Volleyball England and. He was definitely uh opened some eyes in terms of just how big and athletic. Particularly the Italian girls were at, at that age of, you know, sixteen. In terms of the under twenty-twos, they're in a, an alternating year cycle. So one year they'll do the, the qualification in the summer, the following year they'll do the actual Euro uh championships. Um, obviously at that age, you're talking mostly uni-age kids in other countries that maybe play professionally. Um, and, and just, it just fits better for, for that structure for them. Our senior teams unfortunately are not competing in any of these sorts of events, stuff we want to work toward, but it frankly, it's a budgetary thing. I think Simon, our, our senior coach, Simon Loftus, our senior men's coach. Estimated that to, just to play in the qualification rounds of Euros is, is something like sixty thousand pounds. And we just don't have that level of support. So we would have to do a lot of, of revenue generation or fundraising. In order to make that happen. But obviously if our long-term goal is to. Is to, you know, earn Olympic qualification, then it's, it's a direction we need to go to, to make that happen. So. Um, just to give you a sense of what the calendar looks like for the next few years, because you're probably thinking about that in terms of your, your kids. So this year we'll have under seventeen and under nineteen Nevzas in October, under seventeen Denmark, under uh nineteen in Faro. Those will not be qualification events for anything because this is not a, a qualification year for that. So. From our perspective, it's the developmental tournaments. In twenty twenty-five, it probably in January would be the under sixteen qualifiers. As I said earlier, probably not what we're going to do, but I put it in there just, just for reference. So they would do a qualification probably in January and then if the, the main tournament would be in summer. Next year's under seventeen Nevza will be an under eighteen qualifier for the next year. Again, that's going to be in Denmark. Um, under nineteen Nevza next year, which again will be in Faro, will, will not be a qualifier because they pushed. The, the next under twenties out. Um, but next summer will be the under twenty-two Euros. Because this, this summer is the, the under twenty-two main event, next year will be the qualifiers. And then in twenty twenty-six, it would be off-cycle for the under seventeens. But the under nineteen Nevza will be the under twenty qualifier for the following year there. And um there'll be second qualification rounds, kind of like we're doing this year in twenty twenty-four. For the under eighteens from, from the year prior. And as I noted, uh, the under twenty-two Euros will be that summer. So this just kind of gives you a sense of how we're having to try to think about. What years are playing and what tournaments and how we want to start structuring. Um, just the indoor calendar, which is, as I said, is not nearly as simple as the beach calendar. Which is almost the same every single season for the international competition. It's just a question of where. Uh, so. In terms of what we're working toward, because it's very different from what's been in place. Those of you who've been in the pathway up to now will know that the focus was, was more or less on monthly camps. During, kind of during the academic year and then maybe something longer over the summer. With Nevza as being the, the basically the, the key part of the season, that was the main competitive piece of the season. Reflective of, of kind of what you just saw in that, that prior calendar, we're shifting to more of a quarterly concept. Where like, as, as most of you will know, we're doing an Easter camp. We'll do a summer camp. We'll, we'll have Nevzas for those two age groups in the fall and we'll do something. We want to do something in the winter period. It's either camp or competition. And we want to get to the point where. We're at least doing as, as many things that where we're able to play. As we are staying and doing training camp. Um, if, and that can include things like going to Poland or Portugal or wherever. And doing a kind of a joint training camp playing sort of thing where maybe you train in the morning and you play a local club in the evening or something along those lines. This goes back to what, one of those, you know, the three pillars I mentioned before about competition. And getting that, more of that involved for the athletes, we want to do that here. So um, something that may come in here is getting involved in some of the cup competitions domestically. Whether it be Student Cup or the Cup and Shield through the MBL. There was some, some stuff that we've uh put out there. For the under twenty-twos, because of the calendar they're on with their unis, um, and, you know, in the cases if anybody's playing professionally. It's likely to be more of a winter, summer sort of thing. As I mentioned, you'll have the summer uh qualifiers or, and or. The summer uh main Euro draw. You obviously want to do some training before that and we can use the winter school break to, to do training as well. Depending on what athletes are available, um, they may do some intermediate training along the way. Uh, probably alongside what the senior players are doing, uh, the, the senior men get together on a fairly regular basis. Even if it's just for one day in the location. Um, and we want to get the senior women to be more active as well on a similar line. Uh, but those, the under twenty-twos are being run by the senior coaches. So they'll, they'll drive that bus in terms of, you know, who they want to bring in and how they want to do that. We've already said that uh any of the boys who were juniors this past cycle. So who could have been the ones that went to Nevza for under nineteenth in the fall, the oh-fives and oh-sixes. We consider them part of the under twenty-two mix now. They're no longer considered part of the, the younger um athletes. We're talking about whether we're going to do the same thing on the girl's side. Um, we could. Um, we've got a few more athletes to, to potentially look at. Um. And we'll probably make that decision after the Easter camp, after we get past the, the Euro stuff with. With the under eighteens, once we got a little bit more clear sailing. So. Before we get to this, I'm going to let Kirk take over because he's going to share something with you. That he's, I think, probably getting sick of presenting by this point because it's going to be about his dozen time. But it has to do with the sort of athletes we want to bring in and develop in our programs. You're on mute, Kirk.
Hello, everyone. Take two. Uh, you can see that, John?
Yep.
Right, I'm just trying to go back in my slides. Um, trying to figure that out. How do I do that?
Uh, left, left click, left arrow.
Not working. I'll do it manually with my, there we go, we're back. Um, hi, everyone. Um, yeah, I, I guess a small little introduction. Uh, my name's Kirk Pittman. Uh, I'll give you a little bit of background about myself. Um, I guess John's asked me here to share a little bit around, um. You know, kind of a, a development framework that I guess I've um. Kind of taken from my experiences uh as a, as a volleyball player. Um, from a very young age and then now as a, an Olympic coach and kind of going through Olympic campaigns. And just looking at, I guess, really the behaviors that we're kind of looking for um and looking to nurture um within Volleyball England. Um, I started um indoor volleyball uh from a young age through high school. Um. Uh, chose to, once I left high school, uh, chose to, to pursue a career in, in beach volleyball. So that was kind of where, where I went off to, still played club volleyball at, at a high level and won national championships. Um, so I have a good background in, in indoor, but chose to kind of go through beach volleyball. Um, did ten years playing for New Zealand. Uh, that's probably an important piece. I'm in, I'm a New Zealander, you can probably hear the accent a little bit. Um, I met my wife um playing beach volleyball. She played for Great Britain, Zara Dampni. And that's, yeah, I live in, in Bournemouth, so that's kind of a little bit of the connection around there to kind of connect a lot of the dots. Um. For me, uh, I, I kind of. Yeah, I, I lent, I've lent a lot on my experiences and, and just kind of being around volleyball a lot. Um, as, as a player and, and going through it myself and, and then also as a coach for what, from what I'm kind of looking at. And I think, you know, these, these four A's is just something that, that, that I'm sharing here with you today. It's, it's kind of. You know, it's what we're looking for, is what we're looking to nurture. Um, and here's the four right there. So we're, we're looking for an adaptable athlete. Um, an autonomous athlete, an audacious athlete. And we put an athlete in there and that's just more around the, the, the physical, the, the, the actual, uh, maybe the biological kind of piece. So I'm going to just kind of share a little bit going through each and maybe share a few stories um around to kind of. Explain uh which ones are which. Um, so adaptable, kind of adjust to, you know, what we're looking for is someone that's. Uh, adjusting to the situations, uh, you change their actions, whatever's needed on and off the court. Um, embraces challenges and opportunities, uh, accepts failure and, and learns from these things. So I think this through, through, I guess, becoming an athlete. Um, and going all the way through there, we're looking to really nurture some of these things. And very important to reach to the highest that they can possibly reach. An autonomous athlete. Um, I've got a picture here of a, a USA athlete who's played at a high level in college. Won pretty much everything in the college, April Ross, and also has a beach volleyball resume of a. Gold medal, a silver medal and a bronze medal. Um, and I, I guess I put her in this picture here because I think she really. Encapsulates a lot of these things, um, self-disciplined, self-organized. A situational problem solver, a strategic thinker, a free thinker. And really just taking a lot of decisions and ownership um for our own development, um, you know, within a team. On the, on the court for indoor and, and beach as well. So, um. That's why I put April there in her nice Ralph Lauren USA kit. Um. An athlete, you know, like in, in the center of it, you know. I really look to see is, are they an athlete? And I think sometimes, you know, we've talked about some of the physical profiling, um. I, I think, uh, you know, uh, I'm looking, I'm really looking at some of the things that are like, are they masters of some of, some of the fundamental movements? So obviously vertically we're moving a lot uh in volleyball and obviously horizontally as well, covering a lot of ground, especially on the beach. Uh, moving through the sand, you know, their body control, so their kind of coordination and awareness. And the, and the ability to devise kind of movement solutions. Um, yeah, some of their physical attributes, the ability to perform some of these mov- movements with precision, confidence. And a variety, in a variety of movements. Um, audacious, uh, this probably a really, for me, this is, uh. Is, is one that I, I'm probably pretty close to because this picture here. Um, is the partner that I played with uh on the beach volleyball tour for, for ten years. Um, and, you know, he was never the, the tallest, we never reached the very highest point. Because of some of these other things, but I think what he did was encapsulate. Um, this kind of, this overarching desire and commitment to perform. Um, when maybe, you know, he was five foot nine, uh, but competing against six foot eight players. Um, and an unwavering passion and inner belief on a pursuit of, in, in a pursuit of goals. Um, so really just, just really tenacious, uh, competitive. Uh, committed to, to winning and doing, doing what it, whatever, anything that all costs to, for the team. To kind of achieve what they wanted to achieve. So. I think, you know, I guess it's kind of these behaviors around here, um. You know, what we're looking for, what we're looking to nurture. I think it's, I think it's really important, this meeting here, because I think. Um. I think it's showing that um we really value um the support of parents through this kind of development pathway. Uh, and I think it's really important that we share a lot of these things that we're looking for within our players and trying to nurture. So that, um, you know, being a father of two kids myself. To understand how important when they go home, um, that everybody's understanding. Uh, what they're trying to improve and work on, you know, with the coaches on the, on, on, on the court or on the sand. As well as the parents at home, um, because, you know, some of these. Some of these skills or behaviors can be quite um challenging sometimes and, you know, to have support at home and with the coach. And understand that there's a, this stretch support kind of mechanism where we're trying to, to develop these kind of things. I think it's really important to understand that you as parents are a, a big part of that too, not just the coaches. Um, so, yeah. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Kirk. So we'll go through the last few slides here. Uh, there's not a lot left. Did want to leave some room for, for questions and, and other discussions. But, uh, so you may have seen this uh in something that we put out a month or so ago. Uh, through the communications team up on the website. Uh, this one is specifically geared toward indoor, but the, the beach one is structurally very similar. And there's, there's definitely an aspirational piece to this. This is where we want to go. So at the bottom is, are the ways people can get into the pathway, into the England talent pathway. That could be through coach referrals, that could be getting seen in competition. I mentioned Grand Prix's here, if I was for the junior space, it could be UKBT on the beach. It could be through um any sort of, uh, it could be through school competition, it could, could be through regional stuff. Anything along those lines. And then there's obviously events uh on the beach, you, the, the BBDCs kind of fall into this category. Uh, Futures Indoor certainly falls into this category. Anything where. Our staff or the, the scouts that we're looking to develop across the country, get a chance to see athletes. Uh, from there, those athletes will go to a selection panel. And what we're working toward is having that panel be comprised of representatives from all the different regions. So that we have a, a fairly unbiased group of people doing that first level of assessment of. Is this person showing the right physical characteristics? Uh, volleyball characteristics, four A's type characteristics. That we should, we should put them in the pathway and we should at least start tracking their progression over time. And, and consider bringing them into camps. So once you're in the pathway, then that makes you subject to selection for camp. It's, it works the same beach and indoor. Uh, the coaches overseen by. Myself or Kirk as performance directors will make the selection decisions uh for camps. And then also from there to who's going to actually represent England in it, in the international competition. Be it indoor for Nevza or CEV or outdoor for, for the Euros or for, for Nevza again, if that's the case. Or if like for last summer, um, the Commonwealth Games, whatever may, may come along. Those specific uh events may have slightly different criteria attached to them. Uh, the one thing we can say one hundred percent is you must be a, a British citizen. And your nation of origin. Or your federation of origin has to be England. That one gets a little complicated. We won't really get into that here. For most of you, that's not going to be an issue. If you. If your child has grown up playing in England, your federation of origin is going to be England. It's, it's only people. Who have, have, have come in from other federations where, you know, they might have been playing for a number of years in France, for example. And then moved to England, have, have citizenship, but. We would have to sort out the federation side of things. If that, if you're in that sort of situation, that we'll address that um kind of on a case-by-case basis. But there are other some, you know, obviously age requirements and. And certain ways of operation in terms of, of. How the selections get made and in what context. For example, with like Commonwealth Games. That's a, a big multi-sport event, so we don't drive that process one hundred percent. We, we do that within a construct of, of how they operate. Um, and obviously CEV has their rules, Nevza has their rules, FIB. Um, and obviously CEV has their rules, Nezca has their rules, FIVB has their rules. But the, at the core of it, be an English citizen, have your right federation of origin. Don't have any, uh, um, what do you call them? Um, disciplinary issues that would keep us from, um, wanting to select you. And then after that, it's up to the coaches and the per, the performance directors to, to make those decisions. Excellent. Come on. There we go. In terms of what those selections are going to be based on, it's important to note, and this, we were just talking about somebody bringing this topic up before we, we started today. Selections, as I said, on all panels are overseen by performance directors. Um, at the bottom, the younger the player, the more the selection will be weighted toward potential over current ability. If you're 12 and you're a great player, but there's somebody that we think has better potential, then we're, we're gonna take, if we have to make a decision, we're gonna take the one with the, with the better potential. That's, that's the nature of, of a, a pathway. We have to think where this athlete is going to be potentially in 10 years or 15 years, if they're going to represent us as a senior athlete. So keep that in mind. It's not about where the athlete is right now in their volleyball development. There will certainly be aspects of where they are in their physical development, but not as much from a skill side of things. And then in the middle there, um, the panels that are chosen are put together to make selections, whether it be from the kind of the referral process into the pathway, or then once in the pathway into a camp selection and/or a national team selection. Uh, as I said, those are going to be based on coaches, but we're putting in place rules that say, if you're, if we're considering an athlete from your school, your club, whom you have a personal relationship of some sort, you cannot take part in the discussion about that athlete. We just, we're taking that potential conflict of interest out of the equation. And I know it's something that has been a concern. I've heard it. Kerry's heard it. Charlie's heard it. I'm sure Kirk, you've heard it. We've all heard the, the concerns about it. Whether it, it, it's not even necessarily a case of whether it's happening or not, it shouldn't, there shouldn't even be the appearance that it could happen. So we're taking steps to make sure that that's the case, because we do want this to be a fair, uh, process. And as transparent as we can make it. Obviously, some decisions are subjective. A lot of decisions at this level is subjective. We try to use our experience and our knowledge of talent progression and development and, and, and where we need to be as a national program to be competitive on the, on the global scale. But it's not, uh, these decisions will never be 100% objective. They just can't be. That's not the nature of our sport. Other sports, maybe they can be. You do a certain speed on the erg or you run this fast or you jump this high. But not, not in our sport when you've got team dynamics and a lot of other things to consider in here. So in terms of what we're doing now with national team camps, um, there's a big adjustment going on indoor, probably less so from a beach perspective, because Kirk's already had his, has just had his hooks into the, the coaches at the beach level for a little while now, and has been able to move things in the direction that, that we want to go. Um, I mentioned that we're, we're going away from kind of the weekend two-day camps to more of a quarterly, slightly longer, maybe four days, five days, depending on the time of year. Um, we'll work those sorts of things out, but the focus is going to be 100%, much more on performance than on skill development. The indoor, especially the camps for the last many years have been really, really focused on skill development. And the truth of the matter is, we at Volleyball England, barring having a national academy, which maybe we will put, put into place in the next few years, but barring that, we're never going to have enough contact time to make really meaningful changes to people's technique and to train it the way maybe we want to train it. That has to happen at the club level, at the school level, at the, at the regional level, where much more of the contact time is taking place. Which is a big part of why we're working with the coaches to improve how they, they do their work, to have a better understanding of what we're looking for in the athletes coming into the pathway in terms of what skills they have, what their tactical understanding of the game is, the vision, all of those sorts of things. So in our camps, it's like, as I said, it's going to be way more about performance. So the sessions are going to be shorter. Um, a lot of the, the camps, the, the sessions have been three hours, sometimes even longer than that. That won't be the case anymore. They'd probably be capped out at about two hours, but they're going to be a lot more intense, a lot more game oriented. Uh, because that's a major philosophical shift for us. It's part of the coach education stuff that that team is doing. With Gillian, um, and Bertrand and Anna working on that, and also all the tutors involved. And it's a big part of, of what Kirk and I believe philosophically as performance directors, that needs to be the core of how we do things. We're also going to incorporate a lot more education around the, the on-court stuff. And it could be S and C, it could be recovery, it could be learning how to break things down on video, um, mental skills, all these other things that, that I mentioned. Got to kind of go into that holistic support piece that we really want to develop. And then the other massive, massive piece in this, which has been missing, and Carrie will tell you, she harps on it all the time. And we always listen to Carrie, feedback. There hasn't been nearly enough feedback to the players, to the parents, and especially to the coaches on the, on the other side of those players. Because as I said, the, the, the club coaches, the school coaches, they're the ones that are working with these, these kids way more than we are throughout the course of the year. We need them to understand what sort of progress and development we want these kids to have, to keep them moving through the pathway and, and developing toward being the kind of England players that we want. Referencing the four A's and, and just, you know, being those athletes. Hey, we're, we're kind of trying to work on, you know, what is, what kind of style of play do we want to have as England? I'm probably one of the least qualified people here to try to decide what, you know, an England team should represent. So I'll leave that to people who are actually English to help me work that out. But that's part of the process here. So you'll see some changes, um, and if you have questions about them, we want to hear them. Because we want people to understand what we're doing and why we're doing it. All right. And with that, I'm done talking through all these slides and we're wide open to any questions you might have. As I mentioned at the top, although there are a lot more people in the room now than there were when I started, uh, please use the Q and A function to put questions in and we'll do our best to answer them for you. So fire away.
Hi John, sorry. We've got a couple coming already, um, that I haven't got to, to answer yet. So just, um, oh, I believe you should answer because you give them a much fuller answer than me. So two seconds. They said, we've got, um, one that says, will they be openly recruiting for under 22s and beyond, um, the recent selection they did last week? And what will happen to those who have just turned 17?
So those who, if you turn 17 this year, that makes you an O7, right? Um, for the, they, the tricky, the tricky bit with the O7s is they're not going to be eligible for the next under 20s. Because they pushed that out a year. So unfortunately, that year, that age group kind of, you know, got the, the worst of that. So they can still participate this year and next year in the under 19s for Nezca. Um, and we're, we're gonna do that. We're just working out how we want to handle that kind of O7, O8, and maybe with the girls, O6s as well. Um, over these next couple of years, when we don't really have, um, kind of the under 20 stuff to work through. But we also have, as I mentioned, the, the under 22 qualifier next summer that the national coaches were, are, are going to need to start putting, you know, squad concepts together for. So de, depending on where the athlete is, I know, I know seven, we will for the time being consider them still as part of, kind of the junior group. Um, and then maybe some of the better ones might get selected to, to come into under 22s if, if they think it's a good developmental situation for them. I know Simon in particular with the men is really keen on getting top prospects that he thinks can be future senior players into that mix as early as possible. So if he sees somebody who's an O7 that he likes, he will probably want to bring them up if, 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 if it's going to be a good, uh, a good fit. And, and there might be an element of family discussion in that to, because obviously you're talking about a wider, uh, age, age group than just, you know, a bunch of 17 and 18 year olds. Um, so we'll, we're, we're going to keep you posted on that. I, I need to get Maria's view on how she wants to handle thing, uh, things on the women's side. And part of it is based on what's the composition of that player pool right now. So hopefully that answers as best we can in the moment.
Okay, next one, next one that's on the list. How are you contacting coaches with the junior group on Facebook? What happens with the coaches that don't use social media?
Well, we've had, we've had a couple of them actually join Facebook just to be on it. Um, just somebody this past week did it, uh, as well. So hopefully, there's 185 of them right now, which is obviously not every single coach in the country, but it's a, it's a good number. So we think we at least have very good coverage of the clubs and hope that some of the stuff that we're coming through there gets disseminated. And I know that some of the things that we're doing, like speakers we're bringing in and discussions that we're having, we're recording all that stuff. And a lot of it is going out, um, public. For example, last week, we had a guy named John Kessel, who, coaches will know who he is because he's, he was a coach for about 50 years. Um, and has done coach education and coach development work around the, of the world for at least 35, something like that. Worked for USA Volleyball for a long, long time. The presentation conversation that we had with him last week went up on the, the YouTube account for Va, for Volleyball England, for anybody to see. Um, so I know stuff is, is being shared in that way. We're not, we're not trying to hoard it into the group. Um, s- something that will, that's kind of another one of these projects that's going on behind the scenes with Volleyball England is a learner management system, trying to identify something that we can use that would, that our courses, our coaching courses, our referee courses, all of that sort of stuff would, would go into. It might be that the coaches group shifts into that. So we have one platform for, for all of it. So we're, we're not relying on social media to, to do that, but we need to see where that goes. Gillian and her group are, are running that discussion.
Sorry, I just went off my screen then. Um, okay, there was also a comment with that about Discord and, and that being used.
I know the referees are using it and I know, I think the regions and counties have like a, a community of practice that they've got going on there. I will be 100% honest.
So we have had a message from Charlie through saying, saying that Discord is an option similar to the, with the club welfare, um, side of it. So it is something that will be looked into as well.
Yeah, yeah, I figured. I personally have never used Discord, so it would be a learning experience for me, but I'm not opposed to that. I'm a coach. I should be, I should be ready, willing and able to, to have as much as of a, of an open mindset as, as the athletes that I work with.
Okay, next question. Do you envisage coaches coming up to watch Grand Prix's? The platinum pools were very competitive and have excellent opportunities to see athletes.
We obviously would like that. I mean, some of our pathway coaches are coaching those teams. So that's, that's one piece of it. But a lot of our coaches are also coaching other teams. So it's a tricky bit where it's, our, our national coaches are all volunteers and have their own day jobs. Some of them real day jobs, others volleyball day jobs. Uh, so we don't have any people. I mean, the only, the only two that I, three with Kirk, we could say are, are, you know, on staff coaches within the talent system that are Volleyball England employees are myself, Bertrand and Kirk. And all of us do have other things that we have to do. And Bertrand coaches with black country and, and I think the region. Kirk is running around the world all the time with, with the Germans going to, going to beach volleyball events. So we don't have a massive scope to, to, to send these, these coaches all over the place. But the concept of this recruiting network is we get a lot more people who can identify the sorts of things that we're looking for and flag up athletes. It's just going to take us a while to build that up because there's, there's a big educational piece that has to go into it.
Okay, next one for you Kirk. Um, will there be any specific UKBT events that VE will, selectors will attend?
So there won't be any, uh, specific events that they will attend, but, um, coaches will most likely be attending some events and be around. Um, I think the most important part of it is that nomination, um, with supported video, um, to the camps and the selection, uh, is the selection development camps.
And for anybody who hasn't, isn't aware, and we're, 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 we're working to redevelop the website for the talent part to make it more useful and, and more informational. And a piece of that is going to be a resource page. But one of the things that, that we've got up on YouTube, maybe it's not on YouTube. Well, it's available. I think I went through socials. Um, uh, Alex Chinnery from Essex, who coaches the women at Essex, did a video on putting together a highlight video and what, what to include, what not to include, how to structure it. Some tips on how you can do it from a kind of a tools, resources perspective and putting it on YouTube and, and things like that. So we've, that's, that's available to help people actually with the video process. And yes, video is important because it's the, it's the quickest way for us to see you. And I, and I've said to people, even if you just send raw footage, that's fine. It's better than us not being able to see you. Just make sure we know who you are. Because we've gotten video where it's like, okay, here's six hours of video and I have no idea who I'm supposed to be looking at, on which team. Please don't do that.
Okay, next one. How will, how will we, we be notified if an athlete is selected to another age group?
To another age group. So this is where we have to be a little careful. Because the pathway process isn't directly selecting, selecting people into teams, per se. Yes, the idea is eventually you will get selected to a team, but that could change depending on what's coming up. So like for this year, I said, uh, we've got Nezca, but Nezca is strictly developmental this year. It's, it's not a qualification for anything, whereas under 17 Nezca next year is certainly a qualification. So for that tournament, we will definitely be selecting a certain age group of kids. But this year it could be a slightly different age group. Um, like this year, we can, we can have the O8s. Yes, the O8s can play this year's under 17 Nezca, but they can't play next year's under 17 Nezca. So even though we might kind of lump them together in the same cohort for a certain period of time. So you, we, you can't think of it, uh, under the old model where there was a tryout. You're selected for a cohort, age group team, whatever you want to call it, and you were in that group for a year. Because the way this, the, the indoor calendar particularly is not consistent, let's just say. We don't have nice two-year cycles or one-year cycles with the way CEV sets up. We have to be more dynamic with how we're, we're going to allocate. So while we may be able to say, okay, we're going to say O9s and O10 and 10s are going to be kind of the, the new cadet cohort to, to get ready for next year's CEV qualifier. That the six, the sevens, the eights are kind of in this group where for one event, it could be this age group. For another event, it could be that age group or set, set of players, depending on what our developmental process is there. So you have to be prepared that you might get shifted around based on your development, the needs of the program, what, what's on, on the calendar and those sorts of things.
Okay, next one. Do, do you watch athletes on Huddle? How often do we need to send videos in?
Um, there's just, okay, right now, the only stuff that we see on Huddle is either stuff from the, the national teams when they've played. So like all the, all the, the England matches from Nezca are up on Huddle. And I believe all of the Novotel matches from the men when they played in December are up on Huddle. Um, there's also the, the Super League stuff, but that's the extent of what we. But that's the extent of what we have access to on Huddle. So if there's something that's out there that your club is on Huddle or you have a Huddle account yourself, we're not going to see it unless you show it to us, you provide it to us. In terms of how often, it's kind of a question of progression. So every week, that's too frequently. You're not going to make a lot of change from week to week. Every couple of months could very well be quite reasonable because you may have made progress. Maybe you're jumping five centimeters higher. Maybe you've switched to a new position. Maybe you've developed a new set of skills, something along those lines. Or or maybe you've got, you know, you just played a great match against your big rival club, you know, from across town or something that kind of highlights and shows what your progression looks like. So think of it in terms of where am I relative to the last video? Unless in terms of I need to do it every certain period of time.
Okay, we've now got one from Claudia. We're fairly new to this space and feeling out of our depth, like a different language is being spoken. What is the best way for us to upskill the parents? Do you want me to do this one?
Go for it.
For starters, Claudia, I'm going to be sending out a parent and athlete handbook over the next month, which will break all this down and give you a little bit more information. But if you do feel out of your depth and like you need a one-to-one conversation, you can always give us a ring as well. If you look on the Volleyball England website, you'll find my number and I'm always willing to talk you through some bits and like fill in some missing information for you. Okay, Albert. Hello, Albert. Good to hear from you. Why is this year's Nevza not being counted as a qualification round?
Easy, because there are no under eighteen or under twenty Euros next year. So the next under eighteen Euro will be in twenty five, twenty six. And the next under twenty will be in twenty seven. So there's nothing to qualify for.
Okay, I think we've gone a bit quiet now. Hang on, let's just see if we've got any more comments coming in. Sorry, I've just reading a question. Okay, we've got this question. Reference the under twenty-two girls. How does the Angolan All Stars team fit into this? Are they effectively an under twenty-two squad? So I assume we're talking about the Romania team.
Yeah, the one that went to Romania. As I said, ultimately Maria is the arbiter for who fits into that. Age-wise, I think there were a lot of O five and O six girls in that group. So those are likely to be the ones that are going to be a big part of the next under twenty-twos. As I said, though, Maria will look at the full the full set of who's available to potentially select and then make a decision and and will decide from there whether maybe the O sixes, for example, will play Nevza this year. Something along those lines to keep them getting developmental opportunities, competition opportunities and not, you know, put some sort of gap in their development.
Okay, the next one from Derek. When are you expecting to publish dates for the various training camps over the next twelve months? As parents, we need to plan and budget.
Hopefully very soon. Now that the Nevza things just got confirmed in the last week. So now we can start laying plans. Our expectation is we'll do the summer camp in the latter part of August. So we get past the bulk of the beach stuff. To kind of set it up as kind of a lead into the indoor season. We've got the it's, I think it's the fourteenth to the sixteenth is under seventeens in Denmark and then two weeks later will be the under nineteenth in Faro. So it's kind of like it was this past year. With the exception of it being in Finland instead of Faro. So we'll look at potentially doing some kind of like prep camp or lead-in holding camp before those events for the athletes going in there. So the August camp will likely be the selection one for those tournaments. And then we'll work through, there's some other things going on with DICE that might give us an opportunity to do something really exciting in February timeframe in terms of, you know, during the school break. And then it will, it'll take a little while because that's an application process. We have to go through this grant money related to it. So we won't necessarily know for a couple of months on how that's going to fall out. But in the meantime, we're going to be exploring some of these opportunities like the Romania one. Like many of you know, are aware of the Cornaccia tournament that's going on over Easter. Well, that's a club tournament. There's also a national team tournament that takes place in February that we'll look at to see if it makes sense for us to potentially send teams to. That could, again, as I said, be another opportunity to get out there and play and get our teams a chance to go against other people and not just each other across the net.
Okay, I think that is it for now. Has anybody else? Oh, hang on, we've got another one coming. If anybody put a post earlier, which I haven't read out yet, please let me know. What competitions will under twenty-twos be doing?
So at this moment, the qualifier in this summer of twenty-five will be the first one that we know will be on the calendar. And obviously it's going to take some advanced planning because we've got to pay for it somehow. So we'll probably look at what our options are to start fundraising. Once we kind of get a handle on what those costs are likely to be. We do want to get some competition in there if we can. It's just a question of what opportunities are out there for us. Some of the stuff that we're going to be working on in the next even few weeks is going to be collaboration with the other home nations. And that could involve some of the under twenty-twos because I know Scotland is also doing an under twenty-two squad. So there may be some opportunities to do some joint training or competition with them. I don't know where Ireland sits right now. They're hosting the under twenty girls championship or part of it this summer, part of the Euros. So you know, there may be an opportunity to work with them and obviously others on the continent. So we're going to leverage our network to the fullest extent possible to look for opportunities to play. We just have to realize we've got constraints on the schedule of those kids because a lot of them will be with uni teams during their season and we can't really take them away from those squads.
Okay, another question. Has there been any thought of having some parents representatives in some of the pathway meetings to facilitate communication and feedback?
Yes, is the short answer. It's one of those on our long list of things that we're looking at. There's, to be honest, there's so many things that we're working on right now that it'd be great if we could just kind of flip a switch and they're all ready to go. But we know we've got to phase some things in to because there's only, as I showed, there's only six of us, five of us in the talent group, all trying to get this stuff done, obviously with the help of others in our organization and with the support of our coaches and whatnot. But it's not like we have tons and tons of resources and tons and tons of people to do all these things that we want to do. So just be patient with us as we we're really trying to focus on the foundational pieces right now and getting that, the structures in place that we can then build on and figuring out ways to get the parents at a minimum, more understanding and aware of what's going on is a feature of what we want to do.
Okay, we've now been asked, have we got an indication of costs for the next twelve months, assuming a player attends all camps?
Short answer, no. I mean, we have costs for Easter, which we could theoretically project. What we and this comes down from Charlie, so it's not just us. Overall, organizationally, we want to get the cost down to zero. We know that's not going to happen in the short term. We're just not there. And it's unlikely we're going to suddenly get a whole new influx of funding from Sporting England or UK Sport. That's just not that's not the reality of our situation. So we have to find other ways to come up with it. Which is why Charlie's rolling out commercial arrangements. You may have just seen one today. I don't know. He's got a string of them that are coming out. It was kind of a joke this morning talking with Matt from our comms team because Matt obviously has to do all the press releases. But that all feeds into these things. But at a minimum, we want to make sure that we're not asking for any more this year, this next twelve months than we were in the last twelve months. So we're working really hard to try to get that down. Understanding that, you know, costs are costs and we do have to account for them. And yeah, and just in case any other questions are coming out, if you ever have anything that after this meeting or whatever that we have an address, you think of, you can always email us at the talent inbox at talent@volleyballengland.org. We do our best. Derek, Carrie?
I'm just we've just had a parent contribution levels. So with costs, what is the parent contribution? Now, at the minute, that is it's, well, I'll let you explain, John. I'll let you. You explain much better than me.
Well, I mean, you came up with the estimate for last year that was between two thousand and two thousand three hundred, depending on which team it was. So those are the numbers we're trying to work to come in at, at least at, if not better than moving forward. I know that those aren't numbers anybody's going to be particularly excited about. But again, we just have to deal with our reality at the moment. What about in the beach side? Do we have a sense of what those costs are?
It depends on, again, on the individual and the competitions. Competitions tend to be quite expensive. Obviously, if you're traveling abroad, we tend to be looking at about anywhere between six hundred to eight hundred pounds for a competition. However, the camps tend to be, because we only run day camps, they tend to come in at approximately fifty pound a camp. So yet again, depends on how many. We've got four planned for this season for beach. So beach comes up a little bit cheaper on the talent pathway side of things, but then you've got the UK BT to compete in, which is really quite expensive at times.
Yeah. And I should note that there are sources of support that we do refer our athletes and families to. You saw a couple of them on that first, that Pyramid Slides, BoardAid, being one of them, Backing the Best being another one. There's work is going on with the foundation, the Volleyball England Foundation, which is our fundraising arm to do a lot more in this space to help families who struggle in the financial arena. And one of the commercial deals that Charlie's working on also would move in this direction. So like I said, we acknowledge the cost is a limiting factor and a barrier for some people. We're trying to lower that as much as we can. Any final thoughts from you, Kirk?
No, nothing from me.
Sorry, just a little bit with the Easter camps coming up, we've got to, when will we get the actual costs? Okay, so the cost we've got at the moment, our estimated cost, I'm going to sort out the final figures as soon as we've got the numbers confirmed. Because the reason these get left as long as they do is because I want your costs to be as small as possible. So I can do that better when I know exactly the amount of people we've got attending. So hopefully I will get that to you. I'd like to think by the end of next week, beginning of next week. Okay, so I've got a what about playing and training kit?
Playing kit, we're actually working through putting orders in. We've, you've said in your email, Carrie, right, that we want them red t-shirt, white t-shirt.
Not yet. That's going out in the next one when we've got confirmed.
Yeah, this is one of those things that we're trying to work through, given that we're on this different training model and not kind of that twelve-month cycle that we were on before. We'll get there, but we have to figure out, you know, how we're going to manage that.
Okay, we've got, once on the pathway, will athletes get educated about diet and training outside of VE?
That's the plan. That's part of those sessions that we want to integrate in their training camps and it's part of what we want to integrate into the athlete tracking system and the learner management system that the athletes might get access to as well. So yeah, that's part of that holistic piece. And this is something that Dane will be across as well. He'll be heavily influential on the sorts of things that we put into play there.
Okay, I think, hang on, a new post coming. Okay, that was just a thank you one. So thank you very much for that. That's nice. Yes, and the meeting has been recorded, so that will be sent out.
Yeah, it'll end up on the VE YouTube channel. One more thing for poor Matt to do.
Okay, one more coming in. Sorry, sorry, I've got an upset dog now. If your child is selected for the Easter camp, then recalled for the summer camp, but couldn't make it for whatever reason, will there be other opportunities for them to attend other camps?
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, the way that the system will work is, as I said a couple of times, it's not a selection and done situation. It's it's more of a dynamic, how are you progressing, how are you developing sort of situation. So if you come to one camp, it's neither a guarantee that you'll you'll come to the next camp. And it's not a guarantee that if you don't come to one, you can't come to the next. And same with selection from one event to another. So say you get selected to play a Nevza in October, that doesn't guarantee that you'll get selected for the Nevza the next year or whatever next competition is. It has to be earned through continued development and progress and performance, which is all part of this performance environment. You know, it's not just, you know, Volleyball England and England camps are not just a day out with your mates, working on your skills. This is this is performance environment. This is working toward being a strong and national team program as we can possibly be in the competitive space. And to accomplish that, we need to see our athletes progressing over time, including and especially when they're not with us. So that's where this athlete tracking system will come into play. This is kind of speaks to that video question we had before about how often would we want to see video? We want to see video that shows the progression over time. Especially when you're obviously away from us. So in a case where, say, for example, somebody comes to Easter camp but can't come to summer camp, well, that would be great for us to see video of them maybe in September. Perhaps when they go back to training indoors or something like that. So we can see the progression that we didn't see between Easter camp and summer camp.
Okay, I think that okay. Okay, just one last one, I think maybe because we're getting to half past eight, aren't we? If you are selected for the England camps, does this mean you are officially part of the England team despite going to competitions?
Selection to camp is not selection to team. Okay, so this is the differentiation. You get selected into the pathway, which is all athletes that we are keeping track of and considering toward selection to camp and then selection to team. Selection to team is for one event. Selection to camp is for one event. So essentially there's a reset after each one of those. And, you know, the panels will reconvene to look at, okay, who to invite to the next camp or the next, or select to the next team. So there's no automatic piece to this at all.
Okay, we've just got, sorry, I'll just answer this one because it is related about this angular team, the under twenty-twos. If you didn't get selected to that, do you still have a chance to get back in the squad? Now, one thing I want to point out is this Angolan team that went to Romania was not a Volleyball England team. This was not a Volleyball England event. So the team that got selected for that were not a Volleyball England team. They were just a team going out to team going out to to play in Romania. So selection to that has no comparison or no absolutely nothing to do with selection for Volleyball England and for playing for England.
No.
Hopefully that will be, hopefully I said that clear enough.
Yeah, and it's it's like the Cornaccia stuff. None of that has anything to do with England, has no ramifications for whether somebody gets selected to August camp or not. There's nothing, doesn't link up at all.
Okay, so just for um people who want to apply for fu- funding, just to let you know that Sports Aid is one that we we do that. And we put applications for that out in October. Um, if you want to discuss anything about funding, apart from that, if you're having any trouble with payments, please do get hold of me at Talent uh on the Talent email. And it's probably easier if we go through what you've tried and what you haven't tried and where we can help you out.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, that's thirty-one.
Up there. All right. And yeah, like we said, if if you have any other questions, feel free to email us at the Talent inbox and we'll do our best to provide answers for you. So thank you, Kirk. Get some rest. Got to get back on the sand tomorrow. We got to play again tomorrow or you you?
Just coaching. Sorry about the sunburn, guys. I'm in the sun. Yeah, look like a koala or a panda.
Yeah, Kirk's living the tough life in Tenerife, so don't, don't pity him too much for his sunburn.
Apologies.
Yeah. Uh, thanks, Carrie, for manning the the inbox. And uh I guess we'll say good night, everybody.
Yeah, and thank you, everybody, for turning up and 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 actually joining in. Thanks a lot.
Appreciate it. Good night, all.